Good evening. The time is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, April 24th, 2024. I call the Lexington Select Board to order. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format via the application Zoom. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their device by clicking on the link provided in the meeting agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by Lex Media and being retained and archived for future on-demand viewings. All supporting materials that are being provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. Members of the board are in person tonight. I'm Joe Pato, the board chair. Sitting on my right is Vice Chair Susie Barry and on her right Jill Hay. Sitting on my left is Doug Lucente and on his left Mark Sandin. Joining us from staff are Jim Malloy, Town Manager, Kelly Axtell, Deputy Town Manager, and Kim Katzenbach, Select Board Executive Clerk. Due to a tight schedule tonight, I'll check if there are any members of the public here for public comment. Seeing none and seeing no hands raised online, we will proceed to Select Board announcements in our liaison reports. Colleagues, tonight we have one written comment in the packet. Due to time constraints, I'm going to postpone verbal announcements to the end of our meeting. Mr. Malloy, do you have a Town Manager's report this evening?
Good. What's going on? Oh. Looks like I'm unplugged.
And we just have a technical issue with the microphones for the Town Manager's cell.
I'll use Kelly's. I just given the time constraint, I'll pass on any reports either.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Tonight, we have four items on the consent agenda. Number one is to approve and sign proclamations for Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Mental Health Month, National Police Week, Police Peace Officers Memorial Day, and National Public Works Week. Second item is for limousine license renewals for Boyadijin limousine service at 447 Lowell Street and DNO Limo LLC doing business at DNO Limo, 3402 Main Campus Drive. Third, to approve Select Board meeting minutes from April 3rd, 2024, and April 8th. And fourth, to accept a bench donation at the Gallagher Tennis Courts. Are there any items members wish to consider individually? Seeing none, I move the consent agenda as submitted in the agenda packet. If it's been moved in second in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. None is five zero unanimous. This brings us to items for individual consideration. Our first item is to discuss prioritize intersections for the rectangular rapid flashing beacons or RRFBs along the Minuteman Bike Way. Colleagues, you recall that we had this discussion a few weeks ago, actually, well, two weeks ago now, at our table and asked for more time to consider prioritization of the list of streets. We have Ross Morrow, Assistant Town Manager, Assistant Town Engineer with us to answer any questions on the proposal.
Mr. Pato, I don't see him online as of yet.
Thank you. So colleagues, in your packet, you have the revised recommendation from staff and which includes two options, one with Hancock Street included and one without Hancock Street crossing included. Staff continue to recommend to include Hancock Street and will be available a little later to present at our meeting. Also attached is the updated recommendation from the Bicycle Advisory Committee, which seeks for us to retain that. So until Mr. Morrow is available to
Oh, he is on now.
He's next second.
Thank you.
He's on now though.
So Mr. Morrow, if you would like to just give us any context in the changes, I know that there is a included in the packet was a plan for restructuring the crossing at Hancock Street so that it was more perpendicular to the roadway.
Sure, this is Ross Morrow, the Assistant Town Engineer. So for quite a while, there's been discussion of what we could do to make the bike way crossing Hancock Street safer. And one of the sort of guidance, the opinions would be to make the crossing more perpendicular to the road, which also makes the crosswalk itself shorter. And it also adds in what I call S-curves for the cyclists as they approach the intersection, just a little extra reminder to slow down. So that's what we have shown in that plan. I believe the original concept is a few years old and we planned now that we're into the schedule of where we would pave this section of the bike way, we plan to implement this change. So thank you for bringing that up. So what it does is it pushes, I'll say, the east side approach, sort of the visitor center side, further north Hancock Street, about 10 to 12 feet. So basically where the opening in it is now, it's going to be just north of that. And likewise, right now, it shows on the west side, moving it a little bit closer to the Masons. I am working on that a little bit. It approaches close to where they like to use some area for parking and things like that. So I'm working with them to try and find a balance on that side. But pretty much what you see here is what we plan to construct.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. And what implication does this have for proposed RRFB placement?
So the difference would be the RRFB on the east side would be pushed further north, further away from the new roundabout and the Battle Green by that same 10 to 12-foot margin. It does open up, as you can see on your screen, the red hatched area. There's a couple cross hatches in there that would be pavement we're removing. It extends a little further down the bike way as well. If you can kind of see where the, in the background, the pavement bulbs out now. But that could be used for planting area for screening or some other purpose. So that's the east side. On the west side, technically, it would move the west side flashing beacon and sign setup closer to the Battle Green than where it would be if we didn't adjust the crossing. However, we're looking at keeping that, as we discussed at the previous meeting, that assembly to the north. If you look where the arrow that says relocate R5-3, we could put the assembly over there where that arrow is pointing to and then use a bollard for a push button to activate the signal to keep the activation on the correct side of the bike way. So there's a little adjustment in there we can work with.
Thank you. Thank you. Colleagues, are there any questions you have on this adjustment or any other aspects of the proposal? Ms. Hay.
So, Mr. Morrow, thank you very much. My question is, on this proposal that we're seeing on the screen now, this is going to happen regardless of whether we add the RRFB, is that correct?
That is my understanding. That's our plan. It's a safety improvement while we're repaving this area. Generally, those we just implement.
And in addition to some of the aesthetic benefits, you do believe that that S-curve and that different angling of the crossing is also a safety improvement, right?
Yes, yes, I do.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Barry?
Thank you. Mr. Morrow, can you refresh my memory? At the last meeting when we talked about this, did you indicate something about shields that could go on these to deal with the glare or be more directional and where the lighting goes? Could you explain more how that process would be? I don't know if you have a better slide which you could show us?
I don't. So you're exactly right. We did talk about a possible shield or a side visor. What it does, it would cut down on the glare shining to the side. There, this was an idea we were talking about. Through my research, I haven't been able to find one that is directly off the shelf and available by a manufacturer. But I've discussed it with our design consultant. They feel it wouldn't be a problem for a contractor to fabricate one onsite and have it. And basically, it would be, let's say, a six-inch side piece that would just block any light from shining somewhat to the side. Like you are going to get spill over light because you can't block it all going to the side. But something that would help keep it more directed at the road.
So then the flashing light is directed at the road per se? Or is it directed? I guess I'm confused which way it's directed. Is it directed kind of towards the bike path or is it directed to oncoming traffic?
It's directed towards oncoming traffic. These flashers are specifically for vehicles, for traffic, to see the lights light up. So we'd be pointing them, we'd be aiming them, I guess, I don't know if you can see my quotes, aiming them down Hancock Street. They are LEDs, you know, sort of a flood-style pattern to sort of be a little more general of a light to flash. But we direct them, we face them in the direction of the oncoming traffic.
And is there a photometrics plan for how far that light spills out? Have you seen that from the manufacturer?
Oh, sorry. I don't have one at this time. I had limited time to research this and just didn't find one.
Okay, thank you.
Miss Lucente, or?
Just didn't know if there's been any discussions with the neighbors either at, you know, Nine Hancock or 12 Hancock or the Masonic Lodge about this plan and the lights.
I have discussed the plan with the Masonic Lodge. During some extensive conversations we had with them before the Battle Green project, they were kind of looking at this as one complete project, well, you know, sort of since it abuts each other. So we had some discussions with them. They were very appreciative of any improvements we could make for this crosswalk because they have some members who park behind the church, kind of to the right side of the screen and then use this crosswalk to get to the lodge. They've asked for additional lighting or anything we could do to make it safer. We were discussing, as I mentioned, how far the S-curve on their side sort of bends into their, what they consider to be their property. It's all within the railroad right-of-way, so we're not actually infringing on their property. However, over the years, they've taken to use that area. So we're working with them to see how best we can accommodate both interests. The resident at Nine Hancock has been, this has been discussed through other conversations, but I would say, I don't, I know we discussed it while we were discussing Battle Green, but it wasn't an extensive conversation about the geometry changes. And then I don't know if 12 Hancock has been contacted.
Could you just clarify, was the discussion about the S-curve change or was it about the RRFB?
I believe the RRFB project was brought up to the resident again during some of the discussions with the Battle Green infrastructure going in, but I was not a part of that.
Mr. Sandin? And I think you might have mentioned this earlier, but there's a plan as we're doing the S-curve that we would be putting some plantings in that would also have the ability to shield the light for residents, is that correct?
Yes, I would link the plantings with whether the RRFB project goes forward. I mean, at that direction, we could put the plantings in at any time, but they were really correct. They were really more as an idea to help screen any sort of light spill over from the RRFBs.
But, but
But it isn't initially, sorry, go ahead.
But town staff is willing to do that, is that what I'm understanding?
We're willing to do it. We haven't identified, you know, the planting types or what budget's going to pay for it and that type of stuff. But it's definitely something we think we can work into the project.
Thank you. Ms. Hay?
So I have a couple of questions that are probably less for Mr. Morrow, but one in particular, my understanding is that this project or this particular site has been rated as, you know, the greatest concern based on a 2010 report or 2014 report that we received, which I believe, although I don't think we've had the full report, but I believe is sort of a combination of the sightlines and the traffic crash data. So as I'm looking at this, you know, we're fixing some of the sightlines. We fixed a little bit of it with the roundabout and we're fixing a little bit with this S-curve. And it's been represented to us that in fact, there have been no crashes in the last three or four years and only one or two in the last five or six. So I see that the police chief is with us. And I'm wondering if I can put you on the spot, Chief McLean, to talk a little bit about the safety experience at that site, if you would.
Chief McLean?
Chief Michael McLean? I just happened to run some numbers today anticipating potential questions. As far as the crosswalk at the Minuteman Bike Path at Hancock Street since 2018 to today's date, we have had six incidents, I'm calling them there. I only ran them under the, we have something under the term of bicycle crashes general, which could be two bicycles. It could be a bicycle versus a pedestrian. It could be someone just falling at the ground. We have obviously motor vehicle versus a pedestrian at the incident and motor vehicle versus bicycle. So there have been six incidents over since January 1st of 2018, the earliest being 2018, and the most recent was a bicycle grass general at June 30th, 2023. I can tell you, all the bike crossings in the town, we've had approximately 42 documented incidents. And that's just what I could tell by looking at the way we document them at the Minuteman Bike Way. Some could have been entered wrong, I'd say a mass at Woburn or a mass at Merriam. So that's the most recent. Without a deep dive, that's just a quick running of the numbers earlier today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Hay to finish.
So just to clarify, when you say the 42 with the others, that's a cumulative number. That's 40, not 42 at any one particular.
No, no, that's 42 specifically. We have a lot more during the course of the year, you know, everywhere in town. I just specifically looked at crosswalks or intersections across roadways that the Minuteman Bike Way does. You know, Fort La Rav, Merriam Street, Bedford Street.
And that doesn't include all of the other crosswalks, like where I just almost got killed crossing in front of your new, about to be office again this evening. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sandin? So just to the chief, did I hear you correctly? I'm sorry, we've had one incident in the last year in this location, is that what you said?
It looks, yeah, the last one was June 30th of 2023.
Thank you.
And 18 and 19 tend to be the
Other questions or comments?
I was, I guess I'm, and I see that Ms. Gao is here as well, so I may put you on the spot as well since it's my role tonight to put everybody on the spot, it seems. But I know that we have received a lot of letters from the Bicycle Advisory Committee members. And I also noted that you had run sort of an informal poll on Facebook in the Bike Way Users Group. And we got a bunch of feedback, although I will say that that seemed to lean more towards Woburn Street and Revere as, you know, prime concern issues. So do you mind, Mr. Pato, could we hear from Ms. Gao as well on this?
Ms. Gao, if you could give a bicycle committee report?
Yeah. Hello, I Betty Gao, 64 Ward Street. I'm here for the Bicycle Advisory Committee. Can you hear me okay? So since our April 8th, since your April 8th meeting, Select Board, the Bicycle Advisory Committee reviewed the proposed list again of the crossings for all the RRFBs and discussed the abutters concerns about the RRFB at Hancock Street. So safety for all users of the bike way in Lexington is the first priority of the Bicycle Advisory Committee. After hearing the abutters concerns about the flashing light at Hancock Street, the bike committee researched alternatives to an RRFB at the Hancock Crossing. We provided three alternatives in the letter to the Select Board in our April 17th letter, and that included in-ground roadlights, speed bumps similar to the Middleby Road, and street art painted to alert drivers of the upcoming crossing. To address the abutters concerns, the bike committee also members also visited several RFBs in nearby towns such as Watertown, Waltham, Concord, and Acton to evaluate the brightness during the day and at night. The bike committee also reviewed the S-curve design being implemented by the DPW that will move the crossing 10 to 12 feet away from the Hancock Street roundabout. The Bicycle Committee also discussed that residents were the ones who voted for the funding of the RRFBs through the participatory budget program. The bike committee has requested flashers at the bike crossings for over 10 years based on the Tool Design Report of 2014. I discussed that when I came to the April 8th meeting and it was, has been identified as by the Tool Design Report that the Hancock Crossing is now the number one most challenging crossing along the entire bike way that includes all three towns. So after research and discussion at our meeting on April 8th, the Bicycle Advisory Committee voted unanimously in favor of the proposed crossing priorities listed by the DPW with the Hancock Street Crossing as the number one priority for the flashing beacon. Let's see. The safety of cyclists and pedestrians is the number one reason the Bicycle Advisory Committee supports the implementation of RRFBs at the bike way crossings. The RRFBs are safer for young people and students to have the option to press the button before judging approaching cars and then stepping into the crossway walk. Having the flashers alerting drivers of the crosswalk is safer for slower walkers, slow bikers, people pushing strollers, and those in wheelchairs or other devices. The bike committee reviewed specifically the Hancock Street Crossing and identified the challenges of horse sightlines for both the drivers and the bike way users. Car speed above the posted 30 miles per hour on Hancock Street. It's heavily used by pedestrians and tourists walking to Hancock Clark House, the Battle Green, and Lexington Center. The Hancock Street Crossing is the gateway to Lexington Center and the first crossing in Lexington Center from travelers coming from the west. The conclusion by the Bicycle Advisory Committee is that the safety for everyone is best if you have consistent flashing beacons at all crossings along the bike way. Users have to push the buttons at other crossings and should have the safety option to push the button to initiate the flashers at Hancock Street also. The Bicycle Advisory Committee advises the Select Board that the crossings listed by the DPW all have the RRFBs and that we know it's the Select Board's decision. It's about safety for all of our residents, for our students, our children, and for the safety of tourists. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gao. Ms. Hay?
Helps.
Okay. Other discussion by board members? Additional questions about what's on the table? And I'll open it up for a public comment. All right, if you're in the room, please come to the microphone. Before we start with comments, I'd like to remind everyone that we are neighbors and are all looking for the best outcomes for the community. And I ask that all comments be made with stability and respect without casting aspersions or reference to motives. If you are a remote attendee, please raise your hand using the Zoom application or use star nine if you're dialed in by phone. When you are recognized, please state your name, address, or any relevant board or committee. And I will be using a two-minute timer and will interrupt at the end of those two minutes. So seeing no one online, I'll start in the room.
Dawn McKenna, Nine Hancock Street, the director abutter. And no, other than back in the Battle Green discussion where we discussed about all of this. And I just, like, the level of impact that this board has imposed on a property with which you have a contractual obligation to preserve and protect as part of the National Historic Register. I cannot tell you, you've seen my husband here, you've seen me here. Anything anybody is telling you about how they're going to shield it, just like they absolutely had to have 100% lighting. They've reduced it now by 80% because all of a sudden, they've been able to redo the numbers. And even that isn't helping. So I beg you to consider one alternative because I know you're getting all this pressure about safety. And I'm disappointed to hear, after I got an email from the police department, a different set of information this evening. But in any case, what I want to say to this board is what I had asked for the Battle Green Master Plan is that we do the work at Mass Ave and Harrington Road before we do the roundabout. They didn't do that and what we're, that has slowed down the traffic coming there, but we're seeing all this. I'm going to beg you, let them do the changes to the bike path that they're imposing. And do that without the beacons. We don't have at this moment consistent flashing lights throughout town. But let us try that and see if that works. Because as somebody who lives there and sees that it's not a high accident place, because I see them, okay? And any bit of lighting is not going to be able to be protected there. It doesn't matter if it's a few feet back. The fact of the matter is, you now have two sides of my house completely shadowed in lights. This will be a third place, which means all of my bedrooms, my living room, my dining room, my family room, and my kitchen. I'm sorry, Mr. Pato, I appreciate it. But this board keeps making decisions that's impacting, I'm going to finish my sentence.
The chairman's already finished.
Mr. Pato, you, I will, but you allow so many people to say things and you don't allow me to. And that's not fair because this helps. Please.
Next member waiting to speak at the microphone.
Hello, I'm Barbara Katzenberg. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Two. And I'm going to talk on the perspective of a cyclist. And I just want to say, I grew up cycling all the time, starting in seventh grade. My parents never drove me anywhere unless the weather was really crummy. And that was great for me, for my independence, and it was great for them. And I just think, of course, times have changed. That was decades ago. But I would just love to see parents in Lexington feel that they feel comfortable about having their kids, you know, bicycle to their own games or bicycle to school when that was appropriate. And I think in order for the parents to be comfortable, we need to do what we can from a safety perspective. And I think these beacons are a good idea. And I do acknowledge that it will be challenging for the people who live nearby. And so that's not a, you know, that's worth paying attention to, but this really affects a lot of cyclists, parents, kids, and I'd like to see it happen. Thanks.
Thank you. Next president at the microphone.
Keith Olmark, 114 East Street, Chair of the Greenways Quarter Committee, which creates and maintains the Across Lexington Trails Network. And I'd just like to leave three thoughts with the board. Number one, pedestrians are often not as visible as bicyclists in terms of clothing, lights, or physical mass in motion. And drivers approaching a bike way crossing will not necessarily be looking for pedestrians, especially solitary pedestrians moving at a different rate of speed from that of a bicyclist. The Hancock intersection is particularly problematic in terms of cars exiting and often accelerating out of the rotary heading north on Hancock Street or approaching the rotary from the other direction, anticipating that they won't have to come to a full stop anymore and before merging with traffic on Bedford Street. And the third point I'd like to make is if flashing beacons are indeed installed at all other bike way crossings, but not at Hancock Street, it will cause confusion, uncertainty on parts of pedestrians who are going to be looking for the button to activate the crossing lights. Thank you.
Thank you. There's anybody else in the room or online, please make yourself known to me. Seeing no one, come back to the board. Are there any other comments board members would like to make? Ms. Hay?
I just have one other question for Mr. Morrow, if he's still around.
Yes, I'm still here. I'm getting some feedback though, so, but.
I apologize. So my question is, we're looking at the potential of seven or eight different projects. And I see that where the proposal is to bid, the first four is the base bid and then add alternates. Or what realistically, with the amount of money that's been allocated through the arm of money, do you think we are going to be able to cover? How many of these do you think we can accomplish?
I feel that we'll, we should easily be able to cover five. I want to say six, depending on some decisions that we make. If we use more like a standard signpost, a black signpost that we're using around the rest of the downtown and the center projects, then we'll have, we may have enough for seven, possibly even eight. But a lot of the cost goes into those large decorative posts that you see at some of the other RFBs we've installed. So I'd like to think we're around six locations.
Okay, and I thought in your presentation, when we talked about this a couple meetings ago, there was a possibility of actually co-locating these in a couple of the crossings where there actually was a sign of some other sort already. actually was a sign of some other sort already in place. Would that be possible? Didn't we, am I hallucinating?
I think, I think we might have got our communication crossed. There are some signs out there that we'll have to replace. I don't know the state of the posts they're on. So while these can be placed on a, on a signal post, or sorry, on a signpost to save money, if they're not in the right location, we'd have to move it and relocate it anyway.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to get the perspective on what we're really talking about, because I think Mr. Morrow's point is well taken, that we do want some form of consistency for the riders as well as pedestrians as we go through.
Mr. Sandin, and then I have a few comments.
So, thank you. So as I think back through this, we had this participatory budgeting process, and the number one thing that the citizens asked for was for safety at crosswalks. And so that's why we're here today, is because our citizens told us that they feel that they need safety at their crosswalks. And then we engaged town staff, and town staff did, and hired consultants to determine what the bright priority for these intersections would be, and they recommended that this is the intersection is the number one priority from a safety perspective for the town. So from my perspective, I'm thinking, and I really appreciate the comments made by the Bicycle Advisory Committee and the Greenway Quarters Committee, and this idea of consistency, because that is, in fact, what makes for safety, is consistency. And I understand that there are some concerns from a butter or two, but I really think that we need to optimize for safety for all of our residents. I don't want to be here a year from now, hearing about an incident at a bikeway and wishing that we had done something.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin. So I share a lot of your concerns, as you expressed them, as well as what has been expressed by our advisory committees. That said, there's been a lot of work done at this particular location, and we're anticipating changes, and I'm not entirely sure what the best outcome will be there in, over the next several years. So while I would have, normally have said, I highly, and I do highly value the recommendations made by our staff and by the consultants we hire, I'm persuaded that we should wait on Hancock Street a little while. I think it's likely we will end up having to put it here. We have heard from our residents, we've heard from staff, but I'd like to see how the roundabout effects move forward and how this chicane or S-curve change makes the change. And then I also recognize that it's going to take some time to get to all of these, and we have some other inconsistencies, like the use of stop signs for pedestrians and bicyclists versus the use of stop signs or yields for automobile traffic, which is not consistent throughout the bike path. So, so for me, I am going, I prefer option two, which is to remove Hancock Street at this time. But again, I, you, I have a high expectation that we will be back at this table sometime in the next few years reconsidering whoever's sitting here. Other comments? Mr. Sandin?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Pato. I do feel there's some artificial pressure, other than the safety issue, but there's some artificial pressure because we're trying to get this money spent with our ARPA funds before it expires. So this, there's the time element here, we don't, you know, we sort of can't research all of these forever. I also feel that we are creating, if we go with option two, seven, potentially seven safety improvements that are much needed, and I don't want to look this as an all safety or no safety. We are trying to make improvements, and I appreciate the fact that our residents voted, you know, it was online voting, but they had an option to vote which projects they liked. They didn't actually say which intersections they wanted. You know, there was a call for, you know, wanting some more RRFBs, and I think these are, these are great projects, great intersections. I am continued concerned of the proximity between the RRFB at Hancock and the proximity of that and the homes, and, you know, I would go with option two as well.
Any other comments? Ms. Hay?
So that was sort of where I was going initially, when I asked Mr. Morrow about the fact that this is a safety improvement with or without the RRFB. We are, we have improved simply by adding the roundabout which slows down traffic coming out of the center. And by increasing the sightline, we may have increased the safety level in both directions. I am concerned about the picking up speed on your way out of town. I see it all the time, and I know you all hear me frequently talk about how many times a week I come this close to being plowed down when people are doing the same thing, going the other direction out of town in the crosswalk right here. So I, I do feel like we have made a lot of changes in this intersection, and I think I am going to lean on the side of respecting the need to make safety improvements but not getting ahead of ourselves. I'd like to see how what we have done already at this intersection helps. And if it looks like the, probably the best case scenario is to get seven of these done, I'd love to get seven that we can agree all need to be done and see what happens with the improvements that are going to be done and that have been done. I also have lingering, well, actually, I'll leave off the lingering. I think that's where I'm going to come out.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. If any other comments, or I'll move a, I'll take this to a vote. Seeing no other comments, I move that we approve installing RRFBs at the following street intersections in order of priority. The intersection is listed as option two in the town engineer's memo. Is there a second? So moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. It is four to one, the motion passes. Thank you all for your participation tonight. Moving on to item number two, which is to discuss the solar canopy and batteries at the police station project. We have with us Mr. Cronin, Director of Public Facilities. There are a few updates in the information, and in particular, we have recommendations from the Appropriation Committee and from the Capital Expenditures Committee. Mr. Cronin, do you want to make any comments, or should I ask for the two finance committees to go first?
Good evening. Didn't know if it'd be appropriate if you want me to give a quick status update on the Police Department project as a whole.
I prefer you don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So do you want to make any comments on the canopies at this time, or should I ask the appropriation and capital first?
I think at this point, it makes sense to ask those two committees.
So Mr. Parker, I believe you are online for appropriation. Would you make your comments?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Do you want me to do my camera on? No, I can't. Okay. Never mind. So the Appropriation Committee met after the joint committee meeting with the Capital Expenditures Committee and the Select Board, and we had heard, you know, some of the updates from Mr. Cronin, and we, so we looked at the costs that were coming, you know, down the line with the estimates and the difficulties with the pricing that we were seeing. We, the committee expressed a great deal of concern about the expanding cost of the project and felt that we might have bitten off more than we can chew, basically. So, but, you know, at the same time, we're very well aware that we have to make certain trade-offs depending on the priorities that are important to the town and to the elected members of the Select Board, obviously. Our memo that we, that I authored in concert with two other members summarizing our position talks about the, you know, the concerns of how the pricing was managed and the fact that we think some of these items should not be purchased under the current, you know, whatever the numbers, the RFP, the quotes that we received from the general contractor. And, you know, at a minimum, we should rebid these items before proceeding. We also looked at, but just a question of whether or not solar arrays and batteries are something that we absolutely need to have at a police station, and I've learned since then, this is not, this is my opinion, not directly from the Appropriation Committee, but learned there's a very big difference in the design that's based on charging police cruisers and that, so that didn't factor into our discussions at the time, but I will note that that's a factor out there that we've come to learn about. Our basic point was, you know, we think that you should be looking at solar arrays and canopies and battery systems as, you know, a utility and, and it's something that you need to pay for, and a big part of paying for it is the, the payback period that you get when you're looking at these systems and the ROI. And what we're expecting, at least from some very common experience, is the ROI is about eight years. And what we're seeing here was a much longer potential ROI, and we were not really happy with that, and we had to ask ourselves, well, you know, is it really worth it to have this level of complexity in a system if you can't get a decent ROI from it? So that said, you know, our point to the Select Board is, you should be looking at this project and making changes into, in the way that you're purchasing these items to go back and maximize the ROI wherever possible. And we, you know, we don't have a particular style. We did talk about, you know, a third or a fourth option that you might consider, which was rooftop only. I understand that's not a very attractive option, but it is an option and one that would be able to be done within the current budget and would give you some level of ROI and some level of, of, you know, power offset, you know, but at the same time, it wouldn't deal with the police cruiser charging issue. So I think that's all I need to say about the Appropriation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Lamb, if you could present a report from the Capital Expenditure Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the Select Board, Charles Lamb, Chair of Capital Expenditures Committee. I'll cut to the chase, pardon the pun. Once our committee recognized that the batteries in this project are for charging police cars and not for facility standby power, we easily reached a unanimous recommendation to support option number two. Fundamentally, it is in the town's best interest to avoid buying peak demand electrons from Eversource. That objective can be accomplished by storing solar electrons in batteries and then charging cars at any time of day or night, for example, at a shift change. As an added bonus, the town will realize the revenue benefits of selling some of those electrons back to the grid and also gain some facility resiliency in the face of power failures. But to reiterate, the primary benefit of this project is for charging on law enforcement EVs, a program our town has committed to. The revenue derived from Connected Solutions, the SMART program, and alternative energy credits also figured into our calculus, some of which can only be realized with proper battery sizing. Those dollar figures definitely move the needle, but I won't go into the details because you already have them in your packet. Briefly, I'll address five objections that have been raised. Objection number one, why don't we delay part or all of this project? We've seen that movie, and we know how it ended when we delayed this whole building project for a year with a resulting increase of over $6 million. Delaying part or all of this project can only incur similar escalations. Further, getting approval for a second permit at a later date to connect additional panels and/or batteries is a tricky process which requires an appeal to the DPU to override the single parcel rule. Objection number two, the return on investment is just not good enough. This is a municipal project for a building that we intend to own, maintain, and use for the next 50-plus years. This is not a commercial or residential project where ROI standards would be considerably shorter. The lifetime of the steel canopy is 50 to 60 years. The panels have a 25-year warranty, and the batteries, assuming they are sized properly, should last 30 years. Yes, if we were talking about an ROI of 20 or more years, then this would be an expensive project that we should think twice about. Even though we won't know the actual ROI until we see the new bids for the panels and batteries, the current projected ROIs are nowhere near 20 years. Objection number three, let's just put an equivalent number of panels on a parking lot somewhere else in town, and that way, we won't have to pay for the more expensive steelwork. Unfortunately, in order to realize the previously mentioned financial incentives, the panels must be located behind the meter. Objection number four, this project is too expensive and we shouldn't do it at all. Assuming that, one, we want to pay peak demand rates for the electrons used to charge our cruisers, and, two, we want to ignore the citizen's clear message that we should use sustainable power as codified in our integrated building policy, then it is a correct statement that we should scrap this project. And finally, objection number five, we don't need Level 3 chargers for police cars. You have to ask yourself, if during a police shift change, do you want your cruisers officially charged in single-digit minutes with a Level 3 charger? Or would you rather have those cars and officers sitting in the station waiting for an hour for a Level 2 charger? We've all rightly struggled with this particular cost escalation, but when you isolate the programmatic aspects, the decision to continue with option number two, albeit with a probable supplemental appropriation, seems reasonable and correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. So Mr. Cronin, do you have anything else you would like to add, or should I ask the board members for their questions?
I don't have anything further to add.
Thank you. Colleagues, comments or questions? Mr. Sandin?
Just a question I had spoken to Mr. Malloy earlier today about, but I thought just in transparency, I'd let the board know what the question was, and the question was about degradation of both the batteries and the solar panels over time and how that would impact the ROI. Someone brought this up to me, and I thought it was a decent question because it does impact, but I'll let Mr. Malloy or others that may know more about degradation of these items and how that might impact the project.
So solar panels degrade about a half a percent a year, and I looked that up, and then I sent an email to Mark Sandin and Joe Pato. Mark responded that the original calculations actually included that level of degradation. And so I went back and I did check the math, and it is in there, not to offend you, Mark, but I just checked, and it's in there in the amount of energy that would be, that would be created each year by the solar panels. It's actually reduced by half a percent a year in the original calculation. So that's, that degradation is actually in that return on investment analysis that was provided to the board.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Barry?
Thank you. Mr. Cronin, so I just came from a 250th Commission meeting, and so I'm just going to talk about what's foremost in my mind. At what point does Fletcherfield get restored to where it should be in time for 360 days, I think it says in front of the building?
So all of the site work is expected to be completed by the time the Police Department moves in on 6/20. It may be a week or so swing, but all onsite activity should be completed by 6/20 of this year.
So we'll have grass out there?
You'll have grass seed and lawn, yes. We're looking at an option to put down sod, but given the budget constraints we're in right now, right now, we own soil and seed.
And water? Yeah. Okay. And sun. We own the water. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hay?
So I also have previously asked this, but just so everybody else hears it too, if we go ahead and put the steel in now and then go out to bid for the other components, are there any risks of match-up fit or anything else when we have two different sources and two different timelines for a project that has to fit together seamlessly?
So there's really two different components to the steel structure. There's the main steel, big steel ribs that's out there, and then the very top, there are these little parlons, and we would spec the specific panel that's out there and available that we've designed the building for, that we'd fit where the parlons already are designed to sit. We would spec that particular panel. They're available, we're fairly confident that that's the panel we would see in return. If not, we would adjust the parlons as part of the scope of work. It's not that big a deal, it's not like breaking welds, it's a relatively easy adjustment, more of an adjustment than it is a refit, a retrofit.
Right. And Mr. Cronin, just so everyone is completely familiar, the concrete footings in which the steel is going to go, those are already there, as are the various conduits and components for the electrical connection. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Ms. Barry?
For Mr. Malloy, a timeline question. So if we go ahead and put the steel up and then we go back out to bid for the other part of the project, roughly what would that look like timeline wise?
If we put it back out to bid, probably about six weeks, and then we would find out what the funding requirement was, and then we could decide whether or not we're able to move forward or not at that point in time, or whether we needed additional funding. And the thing is, is that even if we needed additional funding, let's say that we open bids and we're, I'm just going to throw a number out, I have no idea, $200,000 short, and we have to go back to town meeting in the fall, once the structure is up, the actual work with the solar panels- Once the structure is up, the actual work with the solar uh panels can be done at any time of the year. It's my understanding. Is that correct? They just use a forklift and they. Can or scissor lift or whatever and and just could, they can do that during the middle of winter. There's no weather restraint or. That. And so we have some flexibility as far as timeline goes. But the goal would be to try to get it done as soon as possible.
So six weeks from start to finish a bid, like, are you ready to go out to bid now, or would it take you a couple of weeks to get ready?
Once we put it out to bid.
How close are you to being ready if it has to go out to bid?
We're about two weeks away with purchasing and making sure that all the documentation is correct.
So about two months.
Yeah.
Total. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Lucente.
I appreciate the finance committee's opinions. Um, interesting when they're on. Different sides of the um decision, but you know, I think for me. You know, we've committed to this. It seems we should be doing our best efforts to get it done. And I feel like option two gets us our best efforts to get it done whereby trying to keep the project moving, trying to keep Fletcher Park. Activated and normalized. We're also trying to get a good pricing or better pricing than what we had. And ultimately, if we have to go back to town meeting, town meeting will decide if this is a great idea or a bad idea. And um, I think they will be supportive of of what has to get done, but I. I think we need to keep the project moving and not, you know, not scale back on, you know, just leaving the footings and I think that's a. Not the right move at this time, I think. We we, the horse has left the barn on this one and we just need to keep, keep things moving.
Thank you, Ms. Lucente, Ms. Hay, and hopefully final comments?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I I completely agree with you, Mr. Lucente. The only point I would make is that if we go back to town meeting. They're sort of in the bind of we all will be, will have the steel up. Um, and so I'm not sure that town meeting will really feel that they have the choice to say yea or nay. Um, because we're not going to leave the empty steel there in perpetuity. So I think we do have to take responsibility that we are making the decision at this time. Which I think we should.
Thank you, Ms. Hay, especially for that last comment. Uh, so colleagues, I'm going to move that we kind of.
I I just have a question about the suggested notion.
I I was actually going to edit the selection motion as I read it.
Okay.
Uh, so I'm not going to include the town meeting portion. Well, I'm going to move forward because town meeting decisions occur later as needed. Um, so I moved to authorize town staff to erect the frame and complete as much solar installation as financially possible at this time.
So can I ask my question?
Yeah.
What does that mean? As much solar installation? I thought we were going to put the s- the steel up and wait for the panels and the batteries. We're going to rebid that part. Is that correct? Or not correct?
We we will rebid it and all all it's basically saying is, let's say we rebid it and we're able to do all of the work. Then it's allowing us to do all of the work based on that.
Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Thank you. It's been moved to second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed say nay. It is unanimous, five zero. Next item for us to consider is the uh executive search firm RFQs that we've received. Um, Ms. Hay, can you lead us through this?
Yeah, so I will try to keep this somewhat quick and focused. Um, in our RFQ. We said that we would um interview the top three most qualified candidates. So we have no obligation to do other than that. If we would like to eliminate one of the four who we feel is least qualified. In our judgment, we can do so. Um, if we wanted to extend it to all four, we could. Um, the, you know, the the real variations here um are price. Uh, and in my view, I think um some of them did a better job of answering the questions about. Um, their diversity experience and their diversity commitments. Um, but by and large, as a technical matter, they all four met the qualifications required in the RFQ. Um, so. I guess I would like to ask colleagues, I will point out that MRI um is the same. Both organization and literal team uh who we hired in twenty eighteen. Um, the only other piece I would say um. I actually, I think that's all you need from me. Uh, I would be interested in what other people have to say. We do have um time reserved on Monday to interview all four if we choose to do so, but as I said, we said we were going to only do three. I think we expected to have a higher number than four, so that was why we had put that in.
Mr. Sanding, I would be happy with shortlisting to two myself. Um, so I don't necessarily need to see three.
Certainly also possible.
Right, so from so from my perspective, I'm very interested in seeing MRI um as. One, we have a track record and two, they have a track record in Massachusetts of of hiring uh similar. So I'll let other folks talk.
Who who would be the other? You said you were happy to limit down to two. Who would be your other? Raftellus? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lucente?
The only one I had concern with was the C CPS HR. It just seemed that they were a little outers. Out of our region. That that was the only one. They had a little three I was fine with, even forward to interviewing, but I I would be okay with two as well. Um, but I had to think about which two.
Okay.
Ms. Barry?
Um, so I similar comments to Mr. Lucente, I'd be happy with three. Um, but if you wanted my two, it would be MRI and GovHR.
And if you were three, I just saw I.
So MRI, Raftellus and GovHR.
Okay.
And Ms. Hay, I am. I I I too MRI with MRI and GovHR. Uh, I I'm a little concerned about the the price point for Raftellus. And that both Raftellus and CPS are really out of the area. Um, so I would prefer to go to.
Okay, um, and I um. I would probably land on three only because I felt that Raftellus and GovHR were the two strongest. On um their diversity work and their diversity commitment. So I would like to keep both of those in. Um, and so I think as I look at the the group of all, then I think the only one that we are would be removing is CPS. Who are the second highest and also out of town. I do have, I do share your concerns about Raftellus's um. Being out of area. On the other hand, I think that um. This, it is less critical in this potentially if they have good contacts and they clearly do. Through ICMA and elsewhere that they understand the role. Um, so I would at least, and those are the questions we can ask. I mean, that's, I think, the important piece of this. Um, so I would ask, before I ask for a a vote on on this, I would also ask if it is possible to have. Um, since we have a short turnaround here. If we could have um specific questions that the board members would like asked on Monday morning. To be submitted to Ms. Katzenbach and if I am empowered to put together a list, I will take those um questions. Uh, as input and I will put together something that I can get out to the board so that we have a set of questions. We can tweak it a little bit if we want to meet slightly before we start um interviewing, if people have concerns or otherwise. Um, but otherwise I'll put something together. But I ask for input.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. So in principle, that seems like a reasonable um request and and process. I do want to make a few other comments about process and then I'll take one more questions.
Let me just add that since we have our schedule currently uh has four time slots on it, we do pick up a little bit of time. Just in case anybody was worried that I was trying to make us go even longer.
A little bit, and we will be republishing the agenda tomorrow morning before the time because we needed the list. Uh, I do want to uh point out that uh some of these bodies, these firms. Are distant. Um, and we had talked about having these sessions with the members in person. And I want to verify that the board wants to have the executive search firm representatives here. Or if we are willing to have offer to them the ability for them to come into as a Zoom session. No matter what, the plan for the meeting is that it's going to be an in-person meeting for us and for the public. We will not allow the general public into the Zoom session and if. And members of the uh search firms will be in a waiting room at Zoom and not able to observe. The um their competitors. Um, they will each have their one turn at uh discussions with us. But the the question that I'm going to pose to you, because we will need to send out a invitation tomorrow morning. Is whether or not you are willing to give the respondents the choice of being in person or remote.
So I think I'm the one who raised that and I had a strong preference for in-person. And I just want to follow up to, I'm not sure, I mean, you cannot let them in, but it's a public meeting, right? So it's going to be on Lex Media. They could watch it live.
It can be, doesn't have to be live on Lex Media. We've had meetings where it gets posted after the session. And it is a public meeting as an in-person meeting for a public to be able to attend. We don't have to do Zoom sessions. What we're allowing is for a participant in the meeting to attend our session remotely. Again, this, we don't have to do it this way. It's opposing it to the board.
So my preference would be that at least, at least. Capital letters underscore bold, one member of their team, if not more, are in person. I think that's important.
And.
For to up the search firms are actually in the room with us.
And I will say that we put that in the RFQ. It says in-person uh interviews of consultants for this project are tentatively scheduled. So they they know that that's a criteria. I I feel differently, you know, potentially there may be other work along the way that can be done, but.
Mr. Lucente?
I would, and I I appreciate that. I would grant maybe a waiver. This, I mean, we're talking about a very short timeframe and. You know, I I know that's my preference too, that they're here, but I. The reality of the world is maybe they can't be, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be so hard on that that we. You know, lose it. I think what's important is when they're doing the search, that they're in person and they're present. Um, this is our vetting process, so I I would be a little lenient on that, but that's just how I feel. I wouldn't. I wouldn't make it a, you're not, you're not included anymore if you can't be here in person.
I I will say, my staff and I were discussing this earlier. Um, when we had been putting the RFQ out, we anticipated more local firms to be responding and. Of these firms, only one is in the New England area. That said. GovHR is still. Close enough, yeah. Um, that said, you know, if we want to continue to require them to attend. The respondents will choose to come or not.
I I think that's right. I mean, I guess in my mind, it goes to how carefully they read our materials. If they didn't feel they could be here, they they might not have chosen to, you know, ask to be considered. And I think it is important for us to understand who we're working with personally. But but a- as important as that, I actually think it's the detail orientation of the people we're working with and it was pretty clear.
All right, that settles that question.
Yeah, I want to thank you. I I was wanting to raise a question. I was wanting to raise a question in case when I'm scheduling, I got asked it from the consultant. And I want to be prepared on how to answer it if they ask if they could be remote.
So we're telling them no.
Right, so the answer is at least one, one member of the team needs to be in person and will allow for additional remote participants.
I think that's fair.
Okay. Other questions about where we are? So I'm hearing a two or three members. We, I think I heard a consensus that the first firm CPS HR. Was not going to be invited. Am I correct?
Yep.
Okay. And and I, you know, I'm hearing essentially that all of the inviting the other three is acceptable to the board as a whole.
Right, I think there are at least two or three votes for each of the other two, and I think that makes sense therefore.
Okay.
Actually, now that I look at it, there are three votes each for each of the other two, so.
Very good. Um, so. Uh, I don't have a motion, but I will make one. Yeah, there is one up here, okay. Uh, so I move to, uh, before I make the motion, I actually wanted to have Ms. Hay make a side comment about the screening process.
I was going to do that right afterwards, but I will do that now. Um, and that is uh just as a the. Uh, we got a very robust, I'm excited, uh turnout of applications for the screening committee itself. Um, we got almost three dozen applications for five slots. So we're going to be talking about that next week, but I'm asking the board now to come prepared for that conversation. With a sense of the criteria we want represented on the committee. So that can be, you know, whatever you feel is important, whether that is someone who has previously served in a townwide office. Whether it's someone who's chaired a committee, whether it's somebody who represents, you know, one of the many cultural um groups in in our community. The diverse, we talked about the diversity of our community in experience background. Um, and so community experience, professional experience and background. So think about what that really means to you, because what we don't want to have is each of us, you know, simply list our top five people. And somehow we end up with five former select board members. Um, and you know, or five, pick your criteria. Uh, as opposed to making sure that we will have um a representative group. We can talk about how we're going to do that later, but I wanted everybody to have the concept in their head before we have the discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Hay, and that is as far as I want to go because of what's on the agenda. I will say that I've added to Monday morning's agenda a brief slot so we could go into a little more detail on that criteria before we meet in the evening. To review the nomination, the applications. There, right, and we'll also talk about some of the scheduling challenges, given that we received quite a few more than we thought we might receive.
So what time are we Monday?
We're meeting at nine AM.
And it just had to go till what time?
Till noon with the the me, the um interview cycles. I will say I have a twelve o'clock school building committee meeting at noon where we'll be hearing the pricing estimates. For various massing studies. I do not want to extend beyond noon.
And then we're back.
And then we're back here Monday night at a six-thirty PM a normal select board time, given that there is. With any luck, no town meeting. Should town meeting continue, we'll be back here at six PM and town meeting will start at its normal time.
So no break?
No break.
Okay.
Well, as colleagues, the board's will is to not meet, but uh. If you look at the agendas for the next two weeks, we have quite a bit to catch up on. And the schedule we put on ourselves for this hiring process is very aggressive. And may well even meeting at these times, we may need to extend it slightly.
I will say, if you take all of these proposals at their face value, actually. We're not so horrible. Um, they actually think that they can beat our deadlines, so if we need to add an extra week, and we can talk about this more, I'm going to bring this up on Monday. But if we needed to add an extra week into the timing of selection for the committee, since there are so many applications, and I want to be thoughtful. We may be able to do that.
Right, I had the same thought and we will discuss this more Monday, but um it is challenging for us, it's challenging for staff. Um, but we are in a bit of a line to get out of and then we can plan our future meetings. A little less intense a schedule. All right, uh, so I moved to schedule the interviews with GovHR USA, Municipal Resources Incorporated and Raftellus. For the Town Manager's Executive Recruiting Consultant uh for next Monday.
Second.
So move to second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay. It is unanimous, five zero. Just brings us to item number four, which is uh the annual town meeting and we have um. Four items anticipated tonight. We are going to uh review Mr. Us- um. Lucente's note on approach to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Uh, but there are a few unresolved uh positions for articles tonight that I'd like to uh uh finish. So, Mr. Lucente, if we could start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Pato, and thank you to the board for um the time to to talk this through, so. Um, I spent a lot of hours thinking through um what, you know, the best approach is for us. And I, just to set the stage where this came up, is the article itself as written is to add Indigenous Peoples' Day. So town meeting votes to support this article, we will have Indigenous Peoples' Day. It does not say replace it, uh, replace Columbus Day. But I think in discussions, everybody's under the impression that that's what is the um purpose of the article and that is, that is what the. But I think in discussions, everybody's under the impression that that's what is the, um, purpose of the article, and that is, that is what the outcome. So I did some time and and put some thought into, you know, how how should Lexington approach this? Um, this is ultimately a board decision on, you know, any other, uh, way that we can handle the holidays. So our options theoretically would be, uh, keep Columbus Day if if the motion passes at town meeting. You know, have Indigenous People's Day, Day and Columbus Day. Uh, have Indigenous People's Day and no Columbus Day. Or what I'm proposing is that we have a dual, um, holiday where it's Indigenous Peoples' Day and Italian American Heritage Day. And I, and I want to explain why this is important and why I think it's a, a good move. I think us defending Columbus and and trying to, um, stick up for what Columbus has done and stood for is not a good move for the community. I think we we should take a stand, um, you know, against what, um, some of the things Columbus has done, uh, was not, not a very nice man. So as as we look at why, why is this important to Italians and, you know, why is Columbus Day important to Italians? I think the history lesson is very important, that in the 1890s, uh, there were lynchings of Italian Americans in Louisiana. In response to those lynchings, the concept of Columbus Day was invented to say, okay, let's appease the Italian community. We're going to create Columbus Day to make them, um, you know, feel feel like they're included. And then later on, it became a federal holiday, uh, under President Roosevelt, when another, uh, atrocity happened to the Italian American community. So for me, that's the connection between Columbus and the Italian Americans. And as an Italian American, it's, it's not, the Columbus piece is not important, it's the, it's the recognizing uh, what has happened to our Italian American, uh, community in this country. And it's a lesson for all of us and how we treat others uh, that come from other places and people that don't look like us and people that, you know, aren't, uh, don't have the same language and don't have the same accents. So to me, it's important that we preserve some of this. I also included in my memo, you know, some of the historical context of uh, Italian Americans in Lexington and how important they were to the farming communities in Lexington, uh, and in the region. And, um, you know, the impact that they had on on the town of Lexington in the early 1900s. So my proposal, and then I also included in the memo, excuse me, other kind, other cities, uh, that have done this. We have, uh, Akron, Ohio and New Haven, Connecticut, both have Italian American Heritage and Culture Day. Uh, Boston, in 2022, Mayor Wu recognized, uh, Italian American Heritage Day to coincide with Indigenous Peoples' Day. And, you know, what I'm proposing for Lexington is that we follow along with that and do do the same thing. And, um, I will leave my comments there and look forward to hearing the discussion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lucente. Um, so, could, to just to make sure we all are on the same page. What town meeting is doing is a, a motion to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the first Monday of October.
Second.
Second, thank you. The, what Mr. Lucente is talking about is not in scope for town meeting and will not be debated or discussed or decided at town meetings. The choice to choose a holiday is the purview of this board. So this is an action we could take in the future. It is not on today's agenda, we are not making a decision on that tonight. What we are, though, is talking about our general direction so that town meeting members are aware of our thinking, and we have had a part of this discussion in previous meetings. Um, and with, so essentially, I think your proposal does not deviate from the general sense of the conversation we have already had, but this will have to come back to us to take any action. Right, so, but we want to make sure that town meeting tonight understands that this board is talking about pursuing the direction as proposed by Mr. Lucente.
And and I think the most important part is that we, uh, town meeting understand what our plan is with Columbus Day. Uh, so that we don't, we will look, um, sort of ignorant as a board if we pass this and then keep Columbus Day when, I think regardless of what the motion is, the impression on people's minds will be that it's handled in a particular way.
Right, again, the the intent that the board is, you're suggesting the board, and I think I've heard general um, agreement with, but we will hear more, is that the board will take future action to stop recognizing Columbus Day and to add, uh, Italian American heritage.
Yes, right.
Okay, Mr. uh, Mr. Sandin, Ms. Hay?
So, um, I, I didn't hear that the board hadn't had sort of indicated that so far yet. I didn't think we've even had that discussion yet. For me, I'm very interested in hearing what the intention of the maker of the motion is, what the intention of the warrant article was from the maker of the motion. So I would hope we could hear from them what they were hoping to accomplish with this, uh, motion.
So, Mr. Sandin? Uh, let me have the board discuss first, but let's have more discussion from the board. Ms. Hay?
So, um, I was going to say, actually, my impression from when we did hear from the makers of the motion was very clear to me, actually, that it was, um, you know, that the second Monday of October till henceforth be commemorated as. That seemed like an exclusive intention to me, that it was a- effectuating a change in how we would recognize the second Monday in October. So that that has been my impression going forward, that that was where we were headed with this motion. And and what that was, what I have been supporting as we have gone along with that. And Mr. Lucente, I I, um, appreciated your your memo, actually, and I appreciate where you're going. And I will note that, you know, this evening, we approved a proclamation for Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Last month, we recognized Women's History Month, the month before that, we recognized, um, you know, Black History Month, we, we have recognized a lot of things, and in fact, we, um, if we haven't before, we should be recognizing the fact that all of October is actually Italian American, you know, Heritage Month. Um, we do know, well, but that is a place that this board could go, and I would be comfortable acknowledging, and that is something that exists already in the world. There is, to my knowledge, at least, no other place where we are recognizing, um, Native American history. And I think that it is actually, or Indigenous people, sorry, uh, I got that wrong. Um, but Indigenous people is not recognized with a day or a month anywhere on our calendar. So I do want to keep this as I think it was intended to be. Um, so that's sort of where I'm coming out and where I would be if this got into further discussion. Um, and since I have a feeling I'm the presenter on this one tonight, I want to make sure that I have, um, clarity in in what the board's position is going to be, so I'm going to let everybody else talk now.
If the board wasn't clear from what I was saying before, I agree with Ms. Hay's position.
Right, so so to take these a step at a time, right? The board has already, um, taken positions on the motion as it appears at town meeting, with exception of Mr. Lucente, who is a wait. The, um, what, first step of clarification is that the board is intending to uh, remove the designation of Columbus Day for that date. And I, I think I have heard that across, all right? So that's clear that Ms. Hay is able to say that. Then there is a a subsequent discussion on, um, finding a way to honor Italian Americans in Lexington. And there's a proposal to co-locate a holiday, or there's Italian Heritage Month, a variety of paths we may take, but that is for future discussion. Is there any other stepwise priority that's needed from Ms. Hay?
Just a vote count.
Well, no, I think that doesn't answer the, right, I I think we sliced this up in in the wrong way, I I. This is, uh, up to the board to make a decision about what direction we're going, and it sounds like the direction you just sliced off the last part of the direction, uh, which is how are we going to recognize the Italian American? And I'm not saying I need a vote on that in this, but I'm, I'm getting a sense from the board that that is a secondary answer here and not, not part of the discussion. Um, it's, it's okay, let's recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. Let's remove Columbus Day and then let's just wait and see. And I'm not, I'm not comfortable or okay with that at all, to be quite honest with you. Um, and in fact, I think this is, this is a, um, you know, where a mistake is getting made of we are now taking one community and bringing them up while at the same time taking another community and putting them down. And that's not what should be operating. And in fact, when we did the holiday lighting, we decided at this board, which was very controversial, that we were going to put up a menorah on Emery Park. Okay, and we did that with the risk of knowing that this is controversial, but we said, you know, we have to stand with our community. We have to stay with the people of our community, and that's what's important. So I'm, I'm, at this point, I will stay and abstain or or await. Um, if the board is not interested in making any move toward, um, recognizing Italian American community.
So, so, Mr. Lucente, I hear your concern. Uh, I will say that any decision that you're looking for here out of scope of our discussion tonight, what we're discussing is the sentiment of the board, and we're going to be clear on exactly what we're doing about the motion before us and the intent for it to be a replacement for Columbus Day. The revisiting, if we wanted to take on what you're proposing, is something we would have to take as a separate agenda item sometime in the future. I'm not hearing unanimous support for your proposal, but even if there were, that's not an action we would be taking tonight. Ms. Hay?
And and to be clear, Mr. Lucente, I actually would support y- your proposal as long as it falls on its own day. I think in the same way that I believe Indigenous Peoples' Day believes deserves its own recognition, I would say that Italian American heritage deserves its own, um, whether that's the day or the month. So I'm, I'm not at all saying, no, I'm just saying I'm not choosing to, you know, have them share a particular day, would not be my preference.
All right, so I think for this item, we, we are clear for what Ms. Hay is going to be, or the information she has for presentation.
Yeah, I, I guess I haven't still heard from the rest of the board what, where people are leaning, I'm not asking for a decision.
So I I am, uh, perfectly happy to consider, uh, Italian American, um, Heritage Day celebration on, coincident or on a different day, that discussion to be held in the future, other comments from?
So for the purpose of this, purposes of this evening, I agree that it's slightly out of scope for what's going to town meeting, but that we do need to put it on an upcoming select board agenda sooner rather than later.
And do we, have you heard from everybody? I've think we have, okay. Other items for tonight. We have, uh, Article 31, where we have Mr. Sandin and I are weights on, this is the, um, uh, single-use, uh, plastic water bottle by law. There, and there is the amendment, so Mr. Sandin and I are weights on the amendment. I have a position of favoring the amendment as it is written. Should the amendment fail, I will favor the motion as is written. Uh, Mr. Sandin, do you have any position to take on?
I, I do not favor it, I'm sorry.
Right, you're a weight on the amendment.
No.
Okay. Any other, uh, comments or changes on that particular item? Not then, Article 43, uh, we have, uh, Susie Barry and Jill Hay with weights on the voting age article. If you're ready.
I want to wait here, Tom Dean.
Fine, and Ms. Hay?
I am inclined, um, to be a yes, but as long as I've waited this long, I think I am going to listen to town meeting as well.
That's fine. All right, any other, um, Ms. Paxtel, is there anything else for us under the town meeting? Ms. Hay?
I apologize, I had one other thing on Article 31, since I am the presenter, I also wanted to, um, have talked to you all about that, uh, briefly. If the question comes, uh, under the amendment, uh, about what will happen if it is referred to us, we had some conversation about this last week. I would like to suggest that, um, our position would be that we would refer it, um, for, uh, to either Sustainable Lexington or the Zero Waste or some, that that the likely path this board would take would be to refer it to a already existing group with expertise in this area, so that it would not languish, because we have a very full plate and we do not have necessarily the expertise for that. So I just want to make sure you all comfortable if I were to say something along those lines if that question comes.
Colleagues, is there, is there any objection?
Without committing, that that would be the likely path we would.
Have we discussed it with?
Again, we have not, so it's, I'm just saying, that's a, but that would be probably my preference, rather than saying we would try to stand up a committee to do it.
Right, rather than create a new overhaul committee.
I think you could say just that way, our preference would be to refer it here or there. If that gets worked, we'll stand up a committee.
Right, and then I have one other question under this article as well, I apologize. Mr. Mr. Malloy, do we happen to know, oh, Mr. McLean is, Chief McLean is still here too. In the now-to-be-open 24-hours-a-day lobby of the new police station, is there going to be a water bottle filler?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Cronin's here too. Excellent, thank you, I wanted to know that as well.
Um, and on this topic, I do want to say that, uh, I've asked Mr. Malloy, should the, should we as a select board choose to follow the lead of the state as an executive order to stop acquiring, uh, single-use plastic bottles for beverages for municipal consumption? We are able to do that, he informed me that should the board take that action, he would be able to implement that essentially immediately. Um, and and we have had communication from a, uh, school group, um, at the high school, who have proposed to us essentially a policy to that effect. And I have invited them to come to us in May or June to walk through what they're asking, and that would be at least the scope of the single-use water bottles, but we could consider all forms of, uh, single-use plastic bottles. And again, uh, if if my colleagues are not opposed to that, that might be something Ms. Hay can use in talking about directions we will be considering.
I'll get those details from you next.
Okay, very good. But that brings us to the end of, Ms. Saxo, we left it, that's the end of, uh, town meeting. So that, I believe, is the last item on our agenda. Brings us to select board announcements and liaison reports, we have a few minutes, not many. Uh, are there additional verbal comments, Mr. Sandin and Ms. Barry?
So I wanted to mention, um, from the Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, the Affordable Housing Trust has been, uh, approached by the planning department to notify the Affordable Housing Trust that there have been permits filed for MBTA Community and 3D. Both of these have affordable housing in them, and the trust has been encouraged by the planning department to, uh, consider potential buydowns using the Affordable Housing Trust money to encourage additional units of affordable housing in these developments. And so the Affordable Housing Trust is going to need to develop some guidelines about how they do that. The question I have for the board is, would the board want to hear ideas along those lines? Would that be something that we should come to the select board and discuss?
If I put it's on the agenda for March, or I'm sorry, May 13th, because we had a request through the planning department.
But, uh, Ms. Barry?
Oh, sorry. Um, I just want to take a moment to thank everyone who turned out last Friday as we officially kicked off the Lex 250 celebrations, you can see the countdown calendars out in front of, uh, the town office building. Thank you, Mr. Malloy, for that, for that approval. It was a beautiful sunny day, we had a great crowd that turned on to hear the Lieutenant Governor and the British Council General, the French Council General, Senator Barrett, and Lieutenant Colonel from the National Guard, not the Lieutenant General, I gave them an on-scene promotion. Um, it was a great event. Um, our official website has launched, lex250.org, visit it, visit it. We are on all the social media, so we'll hope you'll all stay tuned, because we have a lot of exciting events coming up over the next 360-plus days. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and I have one additional comment, and. Thank you. And I have one additional comment. And, uh, colleagues, you have received this email, but the planning department had asked us for comments on a, uh, MBTA overlay district project at Five Piper Road, which includes a, uh, LIP, Local Action Affordable Housing Unit Permit. That information is online in the planning department, and any comments you would like to share on the value of those affordable units being included in the project uh, would be very helpful to their, uh, hearing process. If there are no other comments, Ms. Hay?
I'm just asking a question. I don't understand the question. The value of those units being included in the project, they're required to be included under our, our bylaw, which requires that, you know, over eight units, the fifteen percent, which gets you to eight units, because they did fifty-nine instead of sixty units. Um, so what, what exactly are they looking for from us?
Really two things. Um, one is additional units in general. And the other one is, um, you know, right now, an affordable unit is defined by regulation. And, um, they want to also have a discussion about providing an additional subsidy that would provide, um, an affordable housing unit for somebody who's even below what that level is. And then that would require an additional subsidy from the Affordable Housing. So if they did eight affordable units, and then they did, say, two more that were even more affordable, that would take some additional funding on the behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust. And so they wanna talk to the board about those kind of issues.
Right, that I understand. I'm sorry, I thought, that's, that's, right, that's different. That I understand. That's the buy-down piece. But I, I'm trying to figure out what the planning board wants to hear from us about the main.
So they had a general request on the proposal, but we'll have the more detailed discussion, and that could be sufficient. But since there was a specific request and I forwarded it to the board, I wanted to make that as a public announcement. Um, Mr. Sandin?
And just for a clarification, the Affordable Housing Trust is considering a third option, which is maybe moving single-bedroom apartments to, from affordable to a two-bedroom apartment to be affordable, or a two-bedroom to a three-bedroom. So you might get, so there's a question about how to best utilize funds.
Right. And that's the Affordable Housing Trust conversation on the thirteenth. I'm trying to figure out what the planning board wants from us on their basic filing, because we don't usually opine on those.
So, so we, we have been getting a sequence of this. This is like the second one that I forwarded. Uh, I had not seen these before either, but since they are now coming through the new online permitting and, and notification system, I wanted to make sure the board was aware of them and that they, that email wasn't, um, missed. Alright.
This is not mandatory. It's just looking, if we have comments, we can make them.
Exactly.
So I think that's important too. It's just optional.
Alright, seeing no other comments, um, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the select board will be Monday morning. Monday evening, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty PM via hybrid participation, and the time is subject to the completion of town meeting. Um, the second is a working session of the select board on Monday, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, at nine AM to interview executive search firms and colleagues. I'd ask you to be here at least, let's say, twenty minutes early so that we can, uh, run the countdown calendar for upfront and take a selfie, um, to, to publish. Um, so if, if, uh, you could all be here no later than eight forty. Eight thirty, even better. Eight thirty, uh, Monday morning, but, uh, we will uh, have a session in this room at nine AM. I move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
I moved the second, it all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, we are adjourned.